Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to deliver a report of education being held on Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty four, six thirty P M in the boardroom. I'd like to ask everybody to do one motion. We just deploy of United States, America into the Republic of which stands one nation under God and in this law, the big and justice law. Moving on to village of the floor. Did one sign so far or any others? Just remind everyone, persons wishing to speak should first be recognized by the president to identify themselves. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify as single spokesperson. Comments shall be brief and concise, generally not exceeding four minutes in length per speaker, which may be extended at the discretion of the board president. Each privilege of the floor session is not to exceed thirty two minutes in length. Speakers may comment on matters related to district business only. The board will not permit in public sessions discussions involving individual district personnel by name or by title or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner, obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Alright, we have Raymond Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, just press the green button above there.
Hi, I'm Raymond Wilkins. Okay, so let's start with a little bit of angry father. I've been resident of this district for several years. I really started paying attention to what's going on with the district when I had found the school age. Well, particularly my experiences with teaching staff have been serene when it comes to administrative staff, not so much. And particularly my main point of thought today is dealing with transportation issue. Well, I had a little bit of trouble. I spent the last week trying to research what's been going on with that over the last several years. I couldn't really get too many answers on the website as far as minutes and things like that. But my understanding is the district does spend quite a bit of money. Consultants and software, not sure what that's all about, determine bus trends. My understanding was that there was a major change this year. My understanding again, looking back at the minutes from the past year or so, was that it's supposed to limit how long students are on the bus. And that's not the case, at least in my case, with my daughter. She's on the bus longer and I also happen to live in a part of the district that's a little bit more rural. No sidewalks, it's a very fast moving road. No sidewalks, no shoulder, and I'm now told that I have to bring her to my not so close neighbor's house to be picked up. So let's say if I was not on friendly terms with him, I wouldn't necessarily be able to pull my car in his driveway. So I kind of feel this is a problem. And speaking with the transportation department, was less than acceptable experience. I did have, or late last night, I did find it looked like a memo of a policy change on a website buried in the website. That's a whole nother day to discuss that one. That indicated what I should be doing. And transportation department at no point advised me that that is the appropriate course of action. So I don't know what to say about that. So thank you for letting me speak.
Alright, thank you for sharing that with us. Moving on to the president's report. Just a couple of quick points first and foremost. I hope that all the staff that returned today had a pleasant experience back since the new school year. And more importantly, we just really wish our students all the best luck this year. We hope all the students out there really have a great, great start to their year and good luck with everything. Second, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to our director of facilities, our building maintenance and custodial staff. We had a tour of the facilities today. We got to go around and see all the hard work that the team has been working on this summer. Really, the buildings are shining, the spaces look great, everything looks ready for tomorrow. So thank you for putting that together for us and thank you for all your hard work to the team that's been working really hard all summer. We appreciate it. It looks really fantastic. Moving on, we have our board member committee reports.
So recently we've had, which is shown here by our policy committee, we met. We've been making great progress with that. Honestly thanking Marina Clerk who's really been on the backend keeping this all moving forward. And well, we have them continuously scheduled to the end. Other than that, we had a safety committee meeting recently. It was a roundtable event. It was really a great thing put on the village of Goshen Police, our SRO. Did a great job of putting that together. We had the town of Goshen police, we had county representatives, and we had a great showing from not only our building level administrators, but our administrators being in the superintendent's office. There was a great learning event, I think, by everyone and something that we have to continue to do, but I think everyone still made great progress from that and learned something from it.
So Brett touched a bit on the policy, which we have been working and generally we're working on several policies at a time. In the last meeting, we spent the entire meeting going over the concerns over the use of school facilities. So that will continue, but we did, I think we made some great progress there and we definitely took into consideration a lot of the concerns that had been raised. So hopefully this one will be more student centered and what the community is looking for.
Great, excellent. Thank you for the input. Any other committee reports? Alright, very good. Keeping in fashion with former meetings, did everybody have time to give their second reading of the policies that were in charge? Alright, great. And those are all listed right here on the agenda. So we'll go ahead and just not spend any time on that and at the material. Now we move on to our superintendent's report. Turn it over to Dr. Chris Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. So before I get to the agenda item for tonight, I wanted to introduce one of our new hires that is on the agenda to be appointed, Ms. Kiara Luna. She'll be appointed as a teaching assistant at C J Hooker Middle School. Kiara, I didn't know if you wanted to briefly introduce yourself to the board, tell a little bit about yourself.
My name's Kiara Luna. I've been working in schools for about six years, but I've been working with C J Hooker for about three years now. I'm in school to become a math teacher, so hopefully that'll be my next step in my career journey.
Thank you so much. Welcome. So two, I want to extend my best wishes to all of our students, to our staff as we get ready to open a new school year. It's not by accident that our buildings look the way they do as Mr. Loftus pointed out, but also to our many, many teachers who worked on summer hours to make sure that our curriculum is up to date, to make sure the product that is in the classroom on the very first day is everything that needs to be to help our children succeed. So to all the staff involved on one side of the district to another, thank you ever so much. And most importantly, as Mr. Loftus said, I wish all of our students a wonderful, successful, and enriching school year. So I've invited our village mayor, Ms. Molly O'Donnell, to speak directly to the board and I mean, we're present both virtually or in person tonight. We have been talking about the possibility of a parcel of land adjacent here to the district office, conveying that piece of property over to the village of Goshen. And we have invited Ms. O'Donnell to give some highlights of what potentially the use would be for. Just as a little background, it was in the early nineties, I believe, Ms. Farrell found in the records, all of Erie Street Park was at one time a portion of district property. And similar to what we're discussing now, then a large portion of that property had been conveyed to the village. The village has great plans from what we've been discussing offline so far. And the goal is to see if there's a pathway forward to convey the rest of the properties so the village can convey the rest of it and take over and continue some of that good work. Maravella, I'll turn it over to you. I'd ask Mr. Rediker to place on the screen just a copy of the site plan so people can see exactly the parcel of land that we're talking about. Mr. Rediker. There we go. So without further ado, Maravella, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Coats, and thank you to the board for inviting me here this evening to give you a little bit more information about the villages and towns joint plan through J R C. As you know, J R C is town and village combined, so I'm very grateful for the opportunity to come forward and discuss our very sensitive plans at this point. But as Dr. Coats was saying, some of the property, as you can see on the screen here, divided by Webster Avenue, you have the district property and you can see where we have the two play areas. The one further in the back looks like it's the basketball courts and then the park equipment would be the one in the middle of that play area. We all know where we have shed with park equipment and some school district equipment. So right in the middle of that property, where the play area is divided, is actually school district property. So every time the village has sought to make improvements to the park, we don't own that property. It is school district property. So every time the village or J R C has attempted to make any improvements, we hit a roadblock because we don't own the property. So the village at this time is interested in acquiring the property and we do have tentative plans for approximately four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars upgrades to this park. We have been working, like I said, with the town and J R C, upgrading the basketball courts, all new park equipment. My hopes is to have a small pavilion, certainly bathrooms, and keeping the soccer field as well. So we've been going back and forth with the developer to try to come up with an appropriate plan to present to the public. And thank you again for inviting me. I know in order to transfer any property, we would need to go to a public referendum. So I believe that the village is ready to move forward with that and we're just looking for the board and the district to give us information on what that might look like on your end. So I know we've talked with Dr. Coats and some of the attorneys as far as the timeline and I'm here to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. So I know you said that just now that you'd be looking for soccer fields. Just looking at Goshen, does anyone know this? Um, just looking at Goshen, uh, does that know this, everyone's ultimate goal, uh, you know, if you go over there now, you obviously see football happening. Um, I know lacrosse has always had a a difficult time, um. I hear that you're partnering with the town and I know the town has several soccer fields, uh, where Craig built. Is the sole purpose to put a soccer field or is there going to be the ability for whether it is football or lacrosse or some of the other activities that. Our community u- uses and and most recently, uh, has had to go outside of our. Outside of our town to use.
So it would absolutely be a multipurpose field, um, but that's kind of where we are trying to gauge the public's interest and what the real needs are, um. Both of the district and the town and the village as a whole, um, I don't think what's there now is regulation size for a soccer field. Um, so it wouldn't be regulation size in the future, so I don't believe the district has any official games there, it is used as a practice field. If I'm mistaken, please let me know if I'm incorrect in any of this beliefs that I may have. Um, so that's my intent is to continue using it as the purpose that it's been used for. Um, right now, everything goes through JRC to for use of that property, um, so that would continue to be the case moving forward.
So almost to have a more definitive, um, plan a- as we get closer, because obviously we'd be going after a vote and so forth, um. Would we? Would JRC be able to provide a little bit more clarity on what that that pers- purpose or what that multi-field would look like?
Sure, I do have, um, plans that I have that are in draft form, I was not ready to present them tonight. Um, but I am working on updated plans and we'd be happy to provide those to the board. I do have two dates booked at the senior center for public hearings, should we decide to move forward with this. And I fully plan on engaging the public as well to see what their needs may be and and pull that into the final design.
Okay, great, and and I'm just asking questions, information, that's all.
So Donna, you mentioned that there's gonna be a bathroom, permanent bathroom setup, which has always been.
Yes, that's the plan.
A long issue.
Yes.
How about as far as security, like lighting, which isn't really there?
Yep, lighting would definitely be part of the plan as well, the JRC meeting where we, the draft plans, we discussed lighting for over an hour.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And and just in general, who would be allowed to use these facilities? Um, would permits be required, I know like now, I think we rent out that land on Sundays to an outside soccer field. Would our local residents be allowed to use this at any time or do they have to, you know, sign up in advance for pay, especially use the bathrooms?
So the bathrooms would certainly be open to the public, it is and will be continuing to be a public park, certainly there would be reservations if somebody wants to book, say, if there is a pavilion there and they wanna. Have a party there, there would be apartment boxes like there is for the other parks throughout the the district as well.
So you had mentioned that you had some plans that were in draft form, ready to share, I think it it would be great to see them when they were ready, when. You know, you'd like to share them, uh, you also talked about some of the plans with pavilion. Sounds like this has been something, you know, you've been working on for a while here, so what does, what would your hopeful timeline look like? Should this be transferred tomorrow, what what would your ultimate timeline look like to do improvements on the property?
I mean, ultimate timeline, we're ready to go, the town and the village are working very well together these days and the town is committed to. Put the money up for this park and then the village would pay back the town whatever our share of that cost is. So we're ready, we're ready to take ownership of the property and hit the ground running really as soon as we can.
Clarification question, you had mentioned that the park was reapportioned, you said that was back in the nineties when that happened?
So so the first portion, if you look at the current property lines that's there, that we found that was somewhere in the early nineties, around nineteen ninety-three, when we were in service, man? I believe at that time it was a similar process, I think so.
And just for clarification, um, and you know, for folks here and those listening. When an exchange like this happens and a property, you know, might be sold or turned over, whatever the proper terminology is, to the town, it becomes a public park. What does that process look like, just from an older view standpoint?
So so there's basically two, two ways in which a school district can convey property. Essentially, you could, uh, engage with a broker, put a for-sale sign on the property and sell the property to the highest bidder. However, when you do that, when that land is sold, that land can be turned into anything. Somebody could put a building on that, they could put a grocery store, whatever the it's zoned in legally. Deed it to be able to do, the new owner could do. If you choose to engage with another public entity, municipal entity, because it is, uh, essentially being transferred for lower than what the market value would be. It does require public approval, public approval would say, we understand that the rest of this property moving up to the residential section is already a public park. We'd like to see it stay as a public park in the community, essentially, the taxpaying community of the school district has to approve that transfer of ownership. Just as a side, we've already done a, um, a deed search on the property to make sure that the deed to the property is clear, there's no coverage that's not the deed. The deed to the property is transferable of, um, what.
Dr. Coats, just clarify again for the public, the district property that we have now, since the school owns, we we are maintaining that property, we're spending?
We we actually do the maintenance ninety-five percent even of the the portion that is currently owned by the JRC and the village. Um, we do the vast majority of mowing, uh, the village does part with us and garbage pickup and things like that. But as far as maintenance goes, we are maintaining all of it right now.
Free resources, alright, thank you.
Just. Just to clarify, was that property just under two acres?
The the current case that's still on by the district is just under two acres, that's correct.
And how you just had it highlighted is basically exactly the split, if you look at the paved walkway, that is basically, well, no, actually it goes over where the, um, if you keep going a little bit further. Over all of the playground equipment and that shed, that is all district property, so literally the only thing that the village owns is the soccer field that exists today.
Has there ever been any investigation by the district in the past to? Develop that property, you said that it could be sold and you could do a building with two acres, is it even reasonable the district could use it for?
So A, given the topographies of property, we have not, and the fact that we have developed our own campuses further north in the village, obviously the high school, middle school and elementary buildings, we haven't had the need for it. It is somewhat disconnected from our campuses, so we have not ever explored it. We have less and less happening here on the main street campus, so therefore it's just become less something we've investigated for years further. So so I would make a recommendation to our board, obviously with the village interest, that we move forward with exploring, uh, the transfer of ownership and and what that may look like. That I would suggest could be done through an exploratory committee that the board could form, obviously with public participation. And we could start to schedule a timeline in collaboration with the village to see what a potential, uh, transfer could look like. Thank you, Mayor Adala.
Thank you so much for the opportunity and looking forward to making some improvements on the community as well, thank you.
I'll be mayor for the evening, thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Coats, moving on to our next item, our assistant superintendent for business, Mr. Ray Benfala, right?
You have a good evening, uh, tonight, I'll be reporting on the July information, a new financial packet. Uh, but first I want to remind everybody the tax collection, uh, period has started, it's just kicking off this week, our new tax collector is settling within wealth. And I will have collection data for you at the next meeting, how much we're collecting, to what percentage of the board. Our state reports are being worked on this week and I hope to have them finalized in the next week and sent to the state. Our external audit should be ready for us on October seventh, we have an audit committee meeting prior to the board meeting. When we'll review the external audit with Jennifer from Newt and Housler. And then we have the audit committee meeting and the next board meeting on September sixteenth with our internal auditor. For areas and they're gonna review their report as well. All of our, well, the external audit report is due to New York State Ed by October fifteenth. And for our financial reports, July is fairly quiet and it's the first month of the year for our fiscal records. We had expenditures in the amount of two point nine million dollars and we received about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, twenty-one thousand of it was state aid from prior year. And then we received interest earnings of ninety-three thousand dollars. The bottom is just a summary of the same intro. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Now moving on to our assistant superintendent for break-in instruction personnel, how do you report, Mr. Jason Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Loftus, good evening, everyone. Just a few brief updates for you, um, we had the pleasure last week on Tuesday and Wednesday, the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. To host seventeen new employees, teachers, teaching assistants and school counselors for new teacher orientation here in our main street offices. Um, a lot of happy faces, maybe maybe just a tad of anxiety, but they did really well. Or what we're gonna do with them, so. We had our new teachers meet with Dr. Schneider and Mrs. Sester from GIS, um, our two lead mentors, if you will, in the program. Um, got them enrolled in our Google Classroom, shared all of our necessary information with our future seminars, uh, which. We've got ten months of seminars planned for them throughout the school year. Uh, we also had a chance to, um, really get in-depth information to them regarding APPR and the framework, which of course is a major piece for them in the evaluation process. Um, we discussed roles and expectations of both mentors and mentees and encouraged them to to take part in such activities as, uh, peer observations. Of course, we we recommend multiple meetings and we do put a cap on hours, or not a cap, but a recommendation for a number of hours for meetings. Um, we also talked about some of the new events that our employees will go through for the first time, like parent-teacher orientation. So all in all, day one, we thought went very well, very successful, made a chance to, uh, have lunch with our full administrative team, including directors. And then we ended the day with a, uh, a bus tour for the first time in a long, long time. So everyone got on a bus, took a tour of the entire district, um, that was a great way to to start. And then we rolled into day two with Mr. Rediker, um, specifically focusing on instructional technologies, which of course is very important. So we had a chance to talk about expectations of use of technology, you had a chance to talk about the district vision. Uh, Mr. Rediker does a great job of talking about preparing, um, future-ready learners, not just using, you know, internet and software as for, um, fun tasks, gameplay, web browsing. But rather, um, you know, productivity, learning. So he does a wonderful job with that. Uh, we also talked about our basic management tools like School Tool and and Frontline, which, you know, that's that's just about everything for us in our management day-to-day, both. For students and and grades and also professional development, et cetera. We have an extensive list of software and it's a lot to take in. Mr. Rediker spent an extensive amount of time going through Class Link and access to just about every piece of software that we can use for productivity in the classroom. Um. I think it may be, um, overwhelming at times and maybe exhaustive, but, um, it's something that has to happen. And then throughout the year, we offer a large amount of professional development that our new teachers and all teachers can take part in, uh, to polish up with the software. And even hardware at times, so all in all, I think we had a great new teacher orientation and we look forward to, uh, seeing what our our new hires can do in the classroom for our students, bringing our district forward. We also finalized many of our scholastic, um, literacy professional development opportunities, so we're going to start here in September on the tenth with Scotch Town. Going through, um, really the, so we call it the NSGRA, but it's the guided reading assessments. So we're just getting everyone re-acclimated to to the assessments that we have to give here in the very beginning of the year, talking about components, best practices in administering. And then at Scotch Town, on this particular day, we're actually going to go through, uh, and break into grade-level groups to start to talk about the writing components, which. Writing is a major goal for us this year, so, uh, that that will kick off as an intro on that day in addition to the assessments at Scotch Town. We're going to roll into on on September twelfth, training K-six within the Scholastic Literacy Comprehensive Program. So any new new teacher will have to go through that entry-level training, basically learning every component of the Scholastic Literacy Program. And getting prepared for everything that we go through throughout the course of the year. And then, of course, join into all of the other individual training for Scholastic. Moving on, GIS and CJH will will split on the sixteenth, the same assessment training that we talked about on the tenth, um, going on at Scotch Town. Uh, so again, something very necessary in getting ready and prepared to administer that first benchmark assessment. And then we get into the meat and potatoes of our goals in October, um, with a with a, um, district-wide training here for the writing components. And so on October ninth, we'll break into, um, the major writing components. And then if everything works out, we did plan for the November fifth conference day, um. Another full-on writing PD for the entire, yeah, uh, K-six population. And so if we have to change up and and get another date, we can do that, we can split that, we're in control of of what we purchased in those coaching dates. So I'll work it out with Dr. Coats and and, uh, that future agenda and we'll see where we land, but one way or the other, we will continue on, um, with our writing. And then, um, we have more purchased beyond November, we just have not planned it out on the calendar yet. Most likely we'll roll into late November or, um, when we get back from from that winter recess, builders and. That's it for me this evening, um, one second, please, I apologize, I would like to say, uh, best of luck, best wishes to those coming in. Of course, our students, you know, we welcome you back, we're really excited for what the year brings. And I do want to say thank you to, um, our directors, our administrative team and all all of our buildings and grounds crew for what we had a chance to see this evening, our buildings are in tip-top shape. I think everybody's excited to come back and again, I think it's gonna be a great year, so best of luck to everyone, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Moving on, I need a motion to approve the tenth agenda. Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, Board of Education accepts retirement, Harry Weber, school bus driver effective September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. This Weber has been with the district for twenty-three years. Be further resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, Board of Education accepts retirement, Don Crowe, school bus driver effective September third, twenty twenty-four. This Farley has been with the district for twenty years. Be further resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the remainder of the consent agenda as presented. Favor?
Aye.
Post. Stay? Aye. Alright. Next item, I need a motion to approve policy updates, second readings, renumbering, renaming, readoptions and retirements. Billy and Shannon? Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the second readings, renumbering, renaming and readoptions of the policies as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to approve minutes. Brett and Scott? Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the minutes of the August nineteen, twenty twenty-four regulations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post.
I need a motion to accept the recommendations of the Committee of Special Education on Committee on Pres- and Committee on Preschool Special Education. Billy and Shannon? Be resolved that Board of Education hereby arrange for the special education programs and services based upon the recommendations made for preschool and school-age students with disabilities. By the Committee on Preschool Special Education, CPSE, and Committee on Special Education, CSE. During the period, August seventh, twenty twenty-four, through and including August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. The rest of the district to arrange for the provision of set special education programs and services to such preschool and school-age students with disabilities as recommended during such time period by the CPSE and CSE. All those in favor? Post. Need a motion to approve terms and conditions of evening high school. Ashley and Scott? Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the terms and conditions for evening high school of the Goshen Central School District effective July first, twenty twenty-four, through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor? Need a motion to approve the senior class trip to Orlando, Florida. Shannon and Brett? Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the high school senior class trip to Orlando, Florida from April third through sixth, twenty twenty-five. Be further resolved, the Board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule.
Be further resolved, the Board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule any school-sponsored trip or record in the event of any emergency condition outside of the control of the school district in its sole discretion. In favor?
Aye.
Post. Need a motion to ratify the universal pre-K agreement on my way UPK LLC. Be resolved that the Board hereby ratifies the contract agreement dated August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, on my way UPK LLC for provisions of universal pre-kindergarten programming to district preschool students in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Need a motion to approve closing account in Goshen High School for extra classroom activity fund. Scott. Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, that the following accounts within the extra classroom activity fund at Goshen High School be closed, and the remaining remaining funds be transferred to another extra classroom activity fund accounts at Goshen High School as follows. The class of twenty twenty-four had a balance of nineteen hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. And transferring those funds to the class of twenty-five, three hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-five cents, the class of twenty-six, for three hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-five cents, the class of twenty-seven, three hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-five cents, and the class of twenty-eight, for seven hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Need a motion to amend the contract for school physician services, Dr. Velasco. Ashley and Brett. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, contract for school district physician services with Dr. Nicholas Velasco, be amended to a fee of six thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty cents for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Need a motion to approve the agreement for special education services, Greenberg North Castle U F S D. Billy and Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education entered into an agreement with Greenberg North Castle U F S D about special education services for the school year, July first, twenty twenty-four, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, tuition rates set by the state education department. Be further resolved, the Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute the agreement. Favor?
Aye.
Post. Any additional figures before? Very good. All right, moving on to board member comments, issues, special points.
No, I just wanted to say hey, goodbye to everyone, tomorrow, open day, teachers, metapheters, instructors, everybody, come out. And overall, do a good start.
I wanted to maybe go back to the transferring on the ownership of the park property that was discussed a little bit earlier. Dr. Coats had mentioned maybe establishing a committee to get some feedback. I think similar to what we did with Code of Conduct, I I think that's a good idea. I thought maybe hear from everybody else what your thoughts are. I agree.
I agree. I think it should be done.
Yeah. Yeah, I I I think there's certainly pros and cons, right? And I think it would be great to hear some public feedback. So if you want to start organizing that, I think that would be great.
Is it okay if we just write a short Google application when we put on the website so people of interest can respond to that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, that the process that was used for the Code of Conduct, I think worked out well. And a lot of folks to sign up that wanted to voice their opinion and kind of share in discussions. Okay, great, very good. And one more comment I just wanted to bring up during this section of the meeting, not earlier, you know. You had both mentioned policy, and there was a lot of time spent regarding with building use. And so one of the things that was revisited, you know, in depth was where the cost per use came about and how that can just be expanded to maybe like a one-time use fee. And then some language that could be written in there about if there are damages that are have incurred, you know, what that would look like, or extra security needs or extra maintenance needs should, you know, staff not be available. I know while you and Dr. Coats, you were spearheading some drafting efforts. How how were those going? Good, right, great. Yeah, I know.
It was an app, it was an application fee, which was, it wasn't a one-time use.
Yeah, yes.
And it was rare, yeah, so it was
Then it was like a one-time application fee.
A smaller application fee, and then really focusing on, you know, the use of the facility and the proper use of the facility and making sure that we're not that incur damaging costs. So it was really looking at that, not charging.
Right.
But looking to prevent damage, and if there is damage, how to deal with that.
And just cost in general. There's been some history of just the places left in absolute mess. Some people leave it fantastic. That takes extra manpower. That's something that just has to be looked at so that we're not wasting manpower. Other than that, we all recognize, I think, that there's a civic responsibility to make sure these clubs have a use of this.
Absolutely.
To bring up anything else? And moving on, I need a motion to executive session. Ashley and Brett. Be resolved that the Board of Education will enter into executive session with, should be keeping the meeting discussions related to the employment history, if there are questions. Favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.